Item number one. Anybody have any discussion?
If you'd be interested, some.
I'm sorry. Open the committee of the whole, I'm sorry. Open the committee of the whole. I'll now hear any discussion on item number one, which is the changing of fees for fire marshal code board in section eight dash thirty-three and section eight dash thirty-four.
Point of order? I just have a question as to whether apartment inspection fees are going to be changed in this. Okay. I don't have to redo myself, okay, thank you.
Mr. Rotello, we can. No, I have no idea. Certainly they asked a question about it before making a motion. Mr. Pinter, would you just come up and just give us just a gentle direction on generation of this and how it did at this point, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody. Item number one is comprised of actually two ordinances. The first one is an amendment to ordinance section eight dash thirty-three regarding fire marshal inspections. Presently, there are certain fees that are charged for inspections. The idea is to charge some additional fees and amend some fees. Ordinance number two is a separate ordinance. That would be a new ordinance. This would be eight dash thirty-four. You don't need to worry about the number because that's the way they're numbered in the book for purposes of observation. But the second section, eight dash thirty-four, provides a new section allowing the fire marshal to charge plan review fees. Now, these ordinances were before a committee with the council two years ago or a year and a half ago. Returned for another committee meeting in 2010, earlier this year. Emerged from the committee with recommendations that this council adopt the changes as made. And I won't. It'll take really too long to go through all the changes. Certainly, the fire marshal and others are also here to answer any specific questions. But in essence, there are two or three things that were changed in ordinance section eight dash thirty-three. That's one with the fire marshal inspections and fees for inspections that presently is on the books for this purpose. We made some basically clerical adjustments referencing state regulations as applicable to these inspection fees. And if you have a copy of your ordinance in the file, you'll see that the first page basically is exactly what I just mentioned. It's just some clerical adjustments, clarity adjustments. Page two of the ordinance, this is subsection E, is the first section where we've actually provided a definition, nursing home. And we've also indicated that the inspections are to occur every two years. Now, the term you'll see in there is biannual. And we had a very interesting discussion today. There's a little interesting point that a lot of folks thinks that biannual means twice a year. It actually means every two years. And so we wanted to clarify that. This will be a clerical adjustment, which is not a substantive adjustment. We just want to clarify that the fee adjustment will be, or the inspections, I should say, will be every two years instead of twice per year. That, you'll see that in both places in subsection E. Subsection E two has a new section for assisted living facilities providing a new fee of fifteen dollars per unit. Subsection F is again another clarification, inserting in the general statutes language. Subsection G relating to dry cleaning establishments has inspection scheduled every three years. So we're going to change triannual or ask you to allow us to change triannual to every three years. Further on in subsection I, there's a new fee for hotels. The present hotel fee is one hundred dollars for the hotel at large. The suggested change in that fee is fifteen dollars per unit. And you can imagine that that would derive some additional fees to the city based on inspection per hotel room as opposed to a hundred dollar inspection fee for the entire hotel. Going further down, subsection N has a, is a new section providing for inspections and fees for public service stations. And that fee is twenty-five dollars per pump. Again, that does not exist at present. Additional revenue for the, for the city, and that's every three years for those inspections. Finally, the last section is largely a new section. Provides for remedies for failure to pay the inspection fees. Provides for reinspection fee of twenty-five dollars in the event that there's a problem and the fire marshal has to go back to reinspect. Ordinance section eight dash thirty-four is a new one. This provides for the fire marshal being able to charge for plan review fees. There's really two issues here. When the fire marshal receives a building permit for review, he's got to go ahead and spend time to review that building permit and application. In order to do that and in order to generate some additional revenue, there's a fee structure that you'll see in there for different square footage buildings and other facilities. These will be charged by the fire marshal's office upon your approval. In addition, the second point is language in the preamble to this section that at the discretion of the fire marshal, where a facility exceeds five thousand square feet, he may, if need be, require that the applicant provide an independent inspection firm to provide the inspection. So in brief, that's a new section provides for a new fee structure. Eight dash thirty-four provides a new fee structure for the fire marshal being able to charge plan review fees in accordance with this schedule if you adopt it. So those are the two ordinances. One is an existing ordinance that's being amended. The second one is a new ordinance instituting review fees by the fire marshal. So try to be as brief as possible and cover as much as I could. Again, the fire marshal is present if you folks have the detail.
Page.
Mr. President, I just want to make note that in our, our ordinances, it says ten dollars per room in the hotel. And I think I was on a committee, I think we did sell it for ten dollars. Plus, you said fifteen. The one that we're holding in our hands is ten dollars per unit.
That may be, if I can address that, Mr. President. The minutes of the meeting do reflect fifteen dollars per room. That is the correct fee. That may have been a previous copy that you have in your hands. But so long as the council is comfortable with it, so long as the minutes reflect the correct amount, that is what we will prepare as an ordinance for the council in December.
Thank you. Mr. Rotello?
Thanks, Mr. President. You know, maybe we all have old copies because in section eight-one and also in eight-five, in E, or maybe I should just ask the question, were we going from biannual to annual or annual to biannual? Because both copies that I have say annual.
We're going to biannual and it'll be changed every two years.
It should read biannual.
Yes. No, I'm sorry, it shouldn't read biannual. Biannual means twice a year. It'll be changed to every two years, which is biannual.
Okay, my copy says annual.
That's incorrect. That's incorrect. I don't know which copy you have, but the copy that emerged from the committee.
Yeah, on page eight-one and also eight-five, section E, they both say, at least mine both say annual.
That's, that's not correct.
Okay, could you? Because I think we're working off the wrong sheet here. Could you just briefly bullet point the changes? If I may, Mr. President, because.
Okay, in section, we're talking about eight dash thirty-three, the first one, which is the fire marshal inspections. In subsection E, one, nursing homes, that, I think your copy, Mr. Rotello, said.
Annual.
Annual. And the copy that, that we have, it's biannual. And we will change that to clarify that to mean every two years. So that change can be made. And that's in two places, E one.
Right.
Getting it at the end. In subsection G, dry cleaning establishments, presently, the correct language should be every three years.
Yeah, that's.
Right, every three years. In subsection I, hotels, I think that's okay. So fifteen dollars, yes, we corrected that before. That should be fifteen dollars. If Mr. Rotello is, has said I have a question.
Sorry, we just want Mr. Pinter to finish.
Actually, a point of order. I, you know, in all candor, you're pointing out inaccuracies in this notice, well, not in this notice, in this ordinance, which the very purpose of the public hearing in the committee hall is to act on the changes that have to be noticed to the public. If this is what the public has seen, they haven't been adequately noticed on this. And I'm going to object to consideration of this and then ask for it to be renoticed and put to another public hearing.
That's appropriate, Mr. President, if the council wishes to return a recommendation to the council in December for either recommit or a renotice of another public hearing after these changes are made.
It seems to be as if there are a lot of changes in here that, and that's why I want Mr. Pinter to finish, just to see exactly how many there were. But I agree with Mr. Sadi, there seem to be a lot of changes. And if this was what was noticed in the public, we're going to need to redo this. So I would ask you, Mr. President.
Just go forward.
Just to see if we just take a vote on renoticing and referring this, this would have to go back to the council for referral back to a public hearing?
I would suggest that the council refer back to the council for a recommit to the committee. So the committee can clarify these issues, the council can.
Is it, is it a recommit issue, Mr. Pinter? Or is it just a matter that the wrong copies were provided?
I honestly don't know because I don't know what copies were provided to the council.
If I may. Well, I would move that the, I would move that we receive, and let me walk through this, receive the ordinance and recommend to the council as a whole that the ordinance be renoticed for public hearing at a December meeting. I move that we receive the, receive the ordinance and recommend that the council as a whole at its December meeting, re-refer this matter to public hearing. Correct.
Yes, Mr. Sadi, is that, is that as to eight dash thirty-three only?
Just a second, under discussion unless there are any other concerns that anybody noticed on, to the other end, just the one with the mistakes.
Why don't we just go over eight dash thirty-four and make sure that what we have is what is being recommended by the committee?
Deal with them separately or together, Mr. President? You can take the vote on this one first.
Well, if we, if we know that eight dash thirty-four is right, then we can split that and go to eight dash thirty-four next. If it's not, we can, have Mr. Sadi amend his motions so that it's eight dash thirty-three and eight dash thirty-four. Both get referred back to, renoticed and referred back.
Mr. President, does eight dash thirty-four have issues?
Well, that's important, but I just ask Mr. Pinter right now to clarify, but go to figure over what the changes are that he has. If we have them as well, correct them.
If I may, maybe we should recommit it, but the ad hoc just make sure that their documentation, it's the proper documentation, send it back to the council, send it back to the public hearing next month.
Well, I think, I think Mr. Pinter has what the ad hoc's request was. And I think if he would just go over that with us on eight dash thirty-four, we follow along. If eight dash thirty-four is fine, we can move that along tonight and then just re-refer eight dash thirty-three back to public hearing.
The only problem with this one is eight dash thirty is a brand new ordinance. I basically have to read the whole thing so that you folks can read along with yours. I may can highlight it, but I'm not frankly, and I'm probably, I'm not really sure what copy you have. Copy I have is what I discussed with six of our corporation counsel Edwards, who's at the meetings and prepared the finals. So I don't know what you got.
If you want to make your motion, please, next lady fourth, please.
Well, withdraw the motion if then, if the second or will withdraw the second, and my motion would be to refer both items with a recommendation, the council as a whole in December meeting, refer the matters back to public hearing with the correct ordinances.
Second.
That motion seconded by Mr. Riley? All those in favor of the motion? Actually, no, discussion of motion, I'm sorry. Seeing now, all those in paper, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Thank you, Mr. Pinter. Just with item number two, folks, pension contributions code of ordinance section fourteen dash two. Mr. Sadi?
Thank you. Mr. President, I'd like to recommend the adoption of the amendments to code of ordinance sections fourteen dash eight as clarified by the addition of the words as defined for pension purposes after the word salary on line six addressing contributions to the city's pension plan.
Motion's been made and Mr. Manish has seconded. Make that motion would be by Mr. Rapp. Under discussion. Mr. Chinus first, and then Mr. Vistoffian and Tom Robinson.
Just to the council president, to finance director. So the way I understand the ordinances to be read is that it only applies to new hired employees only?
At this time, yes. That's, yes, that's what this does.
So any of the old, this is non-union only?
Non-union only, new hires as of a certain date, which is January first. It'll be effective date whatever this takes.
So the non, current, the way it stands now, the non-union employees still have their defined benefit plan?
Right.
And that will remain in place until they retire?
This only applies to new hires, non-union.
Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through the chair to finance director. Section fourteen dash eight, contributions by employee and employer. It has in here, contributions shall be made to the trustee from time to time. So it's not taken out weekly or just want to give something else? What was that?
It would be the city's contribution. The employee contributions would be made on a biweekly basis. Good job.
Mr. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through the chair to director of finance. As I understand it, for a new, a new hire, new employee, they would be assessed five percent of their incoming salary. Is that somewhat correct? Five percent?
Somewhat. Whatever is in their pension calculation, that's what it would be used. And right now, that is it.
Okay, five percent. And, and so if a new, new hire was coming in at thirty thousand dollars, they ultimately, they, they would have to pay approximately fifteen hundred dollars. Would that money be assessed over weekly or monthly rather than hit them all at once?
Hit them out of their biweekly paycheck. Five percent of that.
I see.
It's all pretty exact, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Chairman of the council, Chinus?
Thank you. To the council president. In reading this, it says shall contribute, they must then. They don't have an option not to, they can elect out.
There will not be an option, they must contribute.
They must do.
Mr. Rotello?
The chair two of corporation council, Les, this is kind of, kind of left field, but we're seeing this increasingly as we offer early retirement to staff. If someone were to take that and come back to the city in any capacity, would the new rules bind them or would they still be bound by the old ones?
Sorry, Paul, if somebody left the city and came back?
Right. Would they, would they, at that point, be a brand-new hire under this ordinance?
If they were either terminated or retired?
Yes. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? I'm sorry, any other questions? Seeing now, trying your minds, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody seen motion carries unanimously? On to item number four. Airport lease, West Con Aviation. Mr. President? Mr. Rotello?
I need to inform the council that the motion in front of us is not the motion that came out of the ad hoc. The ad hoc had a very specific rent increase level built into the motion of every three years, a C five every three years. That at some point after the hearing was closed and in private, after the motion was made and passed unanimously, and at some point in private without the consultation of the ad hoc committee, was changed to something else entirely, apparently. I don't know how it happened. But any of the councilwoman Ty Schultz made the motion last week to send this to ad hoc. And in her motion, she mentioned as amended, but the amendment was never brought on the forum. So we're dealing at this point with a conflict. We have the original motion that came out of the ad hoc. It was amended without the amendment being voted on last week. I don't know where we go at this point. Having said that, let me just make this clear. Having said this to the council and also to the petitioners, I think the amendment is, will work better for both the petition and the city. I have no issue with the amendment as it stands, with the amended fee schedule. That's not the issue. The issue is we're at a public hearing dealing with motions and conflict. And I have to, I have to inform the council and give an opinion from the corporation council.
Thank you, Mr. Rotello. And what I was going to do is I was going to ask Mr. Pinter if he would come forward and just give us a rundown of what's happened and where we are, where we are tonight.
This, this one is a little, this is a little unusual because the committee did in fact report out with a certain recommendation for the CPI lease, the rent adjustment. Afterwards, it came to the attention of the group that because the FAA requires certain specific lease provisions, nowadays they're acquiring the leases very carefully. And so they want to scrutinize how we engage and create a rent structure. And because it's to the benefit of the city to adjust the rent and increase the revenue to the city, the parties went back and discussed an amendment to the council's recommendation. So it's perfectly true, as Mr. Rotello says, that the committee recommended one thing and what was returned to the council was the same lease except with an adjustment on the rent schedule. As I explained to Rotello, I think, and perhaps someone else a week or so ago, it's perfectly appropriate if the council feels that this rent adjustment should be recommitted for additional discussion. It's a perfectly appropriate remedy. And we would never have brought the lease forward as adjusted unless there was an opportunity here tonight for a committee of the whole to discuss and explain to you the purpose of the adjustment. However, in light of the public hearing and that the lease, and again, whatever's in your packet, I'm not sure which lease you got. Hopefully, you got the lease which has the adjusted rent. But so that's the, that is the lease that the public saw. So you would not be in violation of the public hearing process if that's what the public saw, because that's what's recommended. But again, I want to, there's nothing here to hide. We just tried to provide the best revenue that we could. You are perfectly able and it's proper for you to recommit this, to reexamine the provision as changed. If you feel any level of disservice at all with bringing this back to you in this format. That's his full disclosure.
What you're saying is we, because of the, in our packets, the copy of the lease is what was published. We meet the statutory requirements of the public hearing.
You meet it with the public hearing. If you feel uncomfortable that it's not meant for purposes of the committee, then you can recommit.
Mr. Sadi?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I agree with corporation council. Obviously, it's not an issue of notice to the public. It's sort of the reverse of what we just had with the other ordinance. And probably can remedy this in committee of the whole by discussing it, deciding that we want to amend the committee report and adopt the lease that's presented. For me, this just raises a deeper concern that in another context, if we're not paying as close attention, and this is not nefarious at all, this is just a sort of a hiccup in the process. But where a committee could make a recommendation, something could be referred, then all of a sudden there's a new attachment or something else is noticed. So that just begs a procedural question for me that I'm going to pay maybe a little bit closer attention. And when Councilwoman Rotello pointed this out to me, procedurally, I was pretty thrown off by it. To actually have a lease different than what the ad hoc committee recommended before us at a public hearing that we have referred based on the ad hoc report. It just seems incongruous, I think it would be to any of us. So I'm going to reserve my, my vote on this under discussion during, you know, the committee of the whole. So we have the, at least the public knew what was being voted on. And we can remedy this if we believe it's the right lease. But procedure and process is in place for a reason, to protect the public and to protect us and to protect everybody from abusive process or mistakes. We remedied one mistake here tonight. So let's, got to keep our eye on the ball. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadi. Mr. Napp, before? Okay, I'll let you go in a minute when I ask Mr. St. Helier to come up. And, okay, thank you.
Because I know, I happen to chair that committee. So I know that when we left the ad hoc committee, our intention was it was a three-year lease with a three-year, every three years we renew it and check the index and see what it was and adjust it every three years. It's my understanding now, having read this, it's now it's a seven-year lease and we're going to do it every year. We're going to do the CPI index after that.
That's correct.
So could you explain to us what the financial advantages are? Obviously, I think what Les was telling us before was that was changed because of FAA requirements or desires. And I think that maybe what's happening here, correct me if I'm wrong, is we're trying to streamline the process instead of coming back, going back and forth and back and forth. I thoroughly, thoroughly agree with Mr. Sadi's position on when I left our ad hoc, it should have came back without it coming back before ad hoc. So if you could just clarify a little bit.
It, it was not my intent to, to circumvent, you know, the recommendations of the ad hoc. Quite frankly, I was looking at what, what we had gone through regarding the reviews by the FAA, looking at other leases and knowing that, you know, we don't want this to come back to us in the future. And it, and it was my position that if we had taken this every other, other year, approach every three years and knowing what we had gone through with the FAA, looking at leases and questioning, you know, the, the value of these leases, we probably would have been scrutinized very carefully, if not now, then probably several years down the line from now. Because the annual return on this lease was about one percent. And there was really no wrong or reason to it, to do it structured that way. They tend to like to go with CPI. So we're right on the ball with that. My initial recommendation was to tie it to CPI annually. And if we wanted to, to adjust that, that would have been fine, too. However, the, there must be some kind of, you know, for FAA to be satisfied, there, we still have to tie it to, you know, the fair market value of the rent. We all went through that with, with the middle property. We went through a lot of other things, too. So we kind of, kind of looked at this, we backed up the, there's a couple situations that they could go through. They could continue the existing lease at fifty-one hundred dollars and not made all the improvements and just, you know, go about their business. But that would not have benefited us as a city. Nor would it, you know, they would have been okay, but they could not have maximized the property. So what I did was I kind of moved that forward. You know, at fifty-one hundred, if we moved that forward, but, you know, instead of, and moved it forward at CPI, basically, we'd be about six thousand dollars a year. So we'd be about the same amount. And that's what that chart shows you right now. So we fixed it at that amount for the first seven years. At the end of twenty-five years, we'd be about the same as where we would be if they started at fifty-one hundred. The bottom line is, at the end of twenty-five years, you're getting about two percent annual rate of return rather than one percent. More, you know, it's, it's not just about revenue. It's about what the FAA is going to come back to us and look at, you know, maybe ten years from the line. And we're going to scratch our head and say, you know, the FAA again is coming back to us saying we're not getting fair market value for our rent. And there's another case to be made that basically CPI last year did not grow. This year, not grown. But in the near future, CPI is not moving a whole lot. So there's a case that we can make for that. So that's, that's why we kind of took this appro- So that's, that's why we kind of took this approach, and then in year seven, we said we'll just tie it to CPI and move forward on that. Whatever CPI happens to be, it won't go negative. We're not going to say we're going to drop below whatever our baseline, you know, at that previous, that year, whatever that happens to be. But, you know, CPI could be zero, okay, we're not going to say that, but if it goes up 2%, it's going to go up 2%. But that was the logic behind it. It was really, what could happen in 10 years? FAA, you know, reviews us again. Because I'm always looking at our situation about some reviewer's going to come in in the future and audit us. And that's why I have to do it, because it protects the city's financial interests. So with all due respect to the council, I do apologize for, frankly, I didn't look at the motion that came out to give it. That's the bottom.
Mr. Napp?
Thank you. Just one other thing, or a couple other things. During the course of the ADHOC meeting, one of the reasons that we had set it up, and we bantered this back and forth for about 20 minutes or half an hour, to how we wanted to, we're comfortable in agreement on this between us and the, and the LSE. Do we have a procedure in place where annually you're going to be able to monitor that CPI change? I know that was a concern at that meeting that, you know...
CPI is published and, you know, it's going to be part of the lease.
It's going to be part of your office's responsibilities to notify the LSE of the, you know, the ones in the senior vaults sitting here, CBN sitting here. First of all, congratulations, and thank you for moving forward that piece of property because you're going to do a great job. I know the airport commission was very much in favor of this because of the work that they're going to be doing over there, the changes they're going to make, so it is going to be a nice addition to the airport. So I thank you for that, and I would assume that you're in agreement with all these issues.
They knew what, you know, at least from the finance office perspective, what our concerns were, is, you know, the outside agencies looking at us in the future. Because they don't want to be put in that position either. And so, you know, that's why we came to this accommodation. Yes, in the end, it's going to, over a 25-year period, they're going to pay a little bit more, but it's leases, it's not so far under the radar that FAA is going to say something not right with this lease, they're paying, you know, not paying enough in this lease. Yes, it's tied to CPI, but it's every third year, so really, you're, it's, it's from two years ago, you're playing, playing catch-up. It, it, it doesn't really, structurally didn't make sense.
Mr. Kern?
Mr. President, I don't know who to address this to, but why didn't this come out in the ADHOC committee? Why does it, the ADHOC committee need, they go, they, they come back to report to us, and then they think it's changed? I mean, are we wasting our time having an ADHOC committee? I mean, am I wasting my time coming out at night? I mean, I, I, this doesn't, I don't like this. Doesn't sound right, it doesn't smell right. And, I mean, I don't know, are we wasting our time having an ADHOC committee? I don't know. Maybe I, maybe I shouldn't show up on it anymore.
I wasn't there that night, I, I couldn't make it that night. As you know, I'm usually at these things, but that night I would not make it.
Mr. Hare?
Before I get fired, I don't know. It, it just seems to me that, going along with what Councilman Kern has said there, and what Councilman Sadi has said, and this may not be the perfect time to bring this up, but shouldn't there be some sort of a fail-safe mechanism? Are we relying on, in this particular instance, perhaps Mr. St. Helier would have brought this to our attention, or you might have, Mr. President, I'm not sure, or maybe the chairman of the committee would have. But it seems to be, it seems to me that there needs to be some sort of a fail-safe mechanism that says, wait a minute, folks, this isn't what we discussed. And I didn't know where that was going to come up. So perhaps we need, maybe at some point to discuss a way of making sure that that doesn't happen again. Because I certainly would not have caught that had someone not brought it up. So I just want to put that out, Mr. President, for whoever has to consider that, and that's my comment.
Mr. Sadi? Mr. Rann?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could, a comment. I don't think for a minute that I would ever question the integrity of anybody in this building, any of the committee members. But I think that we have a serious problem when we have something like this that does take place, and again, I say in a most honest way, I'm sure, trying to do what is best in terms of generating maybe income, et cetera, et cetera. But we always have to, as we sit on this dais, we always have to be conscious of how the public perceives things like this that might happen. We know in our own ways that this is an honest, whatever you want to call it, a mistake or whatever, or an honest, an honest thing to help move things along. But again, I, I really think that we really have to sit back, we have to say, these are things that we can't allow to happen, as Councilman Sadi had mentioned, this is the reverse of the other situation that we just remanded back, I guess. And I, I sort of feel that I, I stand with Councilman Kern, that maybe we have to pull this back or, and redo and resubmit in some way. I don't know if that's my feeling, but that's my feeling on it. And we have to be really careful about the public and their perception of what we're doing.
If I may?
Mr. St. Helier, yes, please proceed, and then I'd like to go to Mr. Pinter, maybe Mr. Estefan.
As I mentioned before, this has less to do with revenue generation than it does with procedural, with the FAA. I mean, because, you know, they're going to review the rent to make sure that's fair market value. Now, I don't determine what fair market value is, but they, you know, when they see a rent that is fixed and it's not increasing, they're going to question it. Now, we had an appraisal done, and, you know, over time, I can tell you that over the last 25 years, the annual has increased 3.3%. This is significantly less. Well, the last couple of years has shown that we're not on 3.3% rate, but 25, for the last 25 years, we have gone up 3.3% annually. So we have to sort of, kind of, you know, make a sincere effort to structure a contract that reflects some tie to it, even if that means there's a slight delay. Now, procedurally, I, I think, we didn't think it was going to be any surprise that this is going to refer back to public hearing or anything else. We didn't know, you know, what exactly would happen. But my, my question would be, I, I wouldn't feel I would be doing my job as, as your financial watchdog, if I allowed to go, if a lot of the city to go into a contract that was probably not in the city's best interest, knowing that maybe the FAA is going to look at us several years down the line. You know, so I, I couldn't just sit back and say, yeah, okay, that's fine. I'm not sure what the best procedure would have been to answer your question.
Mr. Sadi, and then we'll miss the meeting, and then Mr. Chiesi.
I think we're all pretty clear that we're upset with some of the procedural things that have occurred tonight and with regard to this committee. Thankfully, the public was noticed with the appropriate document. I, I would hate to hold up or in any way punish the prospective LSE, because it is the document, the document is before us. We can decide tonight whether this is a good schedule, a good fee schedule. It seems to me that the committee members don't have an objection to it. And I think we've made it really darn clear that people better look at their items and make sure procedurally things aren't problematic, because I think this is, tonight has brought some of these things to the forefront. My bigger concern is on substantive items, where we may not like what has been added, and we're not aware of it. That's where we really need to be careful. So in all candor, I think that this lease does what it is supposed to do in compliance with FAA rules and regs, and I will move adoption of the lease as presented tonight, as long as we're sure this is the right one. I don't mean to be facetious about it, but as long as this is the appropriate one, it's been noticed and it's been negotiated with, with the LSE. So again, I move to adopt the lease that is presented to us tonight, recommend, well, let me, let me strike that. I move that we recommend to the council as a whole adoption of the lease as presented at the public hearing tonight before this committee.
Seconded by Mr. Vuskant. Under discussion, we'll go to Mr. Demichi, okay, and Mr. Chiesi.
Thank you. Again, through the council, President. I just want to hear from the airport administrator, because she's the one who has to live with this lease day in day, so if he's comfortable with this lease as presented this evening, or then now we need to take it back and take another look at it.
Paul Estefan, ESTEFA. Good evening, members of the council. Yes, I'm very comfortable with the lease. It is a, it is a remarkable document that's taken only 25 years of my life to get to. And I say that because when I first took over the airport in 82, the lease was only generating $176 a year to us. Hello. That lease finally expired in the year 2002, I believe, at a grant total of just over $300, with no CPI, with nothing. We spent $1.4 million on that property that we own. We also got the right to put through an 18-inch sewer main that was sitting dormant there and brought it out to Wallingford Road, so in future years, the city did not have to go and negotiate with the new property owners to get that, that spur line, as they call it, out to a public access. A lot of things took place in that entire grant process back in the early 90s. So having said that, and with the appraisal coming back at a higher rate and getting more money and through the efforts of our finance director and attorney Pinter and members of the common council, we are able to get it to where we can live with it. I must tell you though, when I, when I leave council meetings at night, the next morning it's, it's, it's on the phone to the FAA, making sure they're happy with it. And then when they look at it, and they send me their comments, I get them out to the parties concerned internally to make sure that we're in compliance with all of our grant assurances to the best of our ability. There are times that we flounder a little bit, and there are times that we're in on a mark. But this one was unique. I got to tell you, when we finished the council meeting that night, I was back at my computer making sure the FAA knew what was going on, because they're watching us, they're watching us like a hawk, and they want to make sure there's a fair market return for the airport and its operating budget. Having said that, thank you.
Chiesi, anything else? Anything else? Mr. Rattister, Mr. Rotello?
Through the chair, through Director Estefan Pulte, don't get up. The taxiway, are we okay with the taxiway? The adjacent taxiway?
Yes, we are, sure, thank you.
Mr. Pinter, did you want to add something?
Just every criticism that you've left me there has been valid, including Mr. Kern's. I just wanted to make sure the council understood that, understands that, as Mr. Sadi described it, perhaps as a hiccup, a procedural defect, our office certainly has a substantial part in making sure that the motion from the committee matches the document and the final action that this council takes. And to the extent that we failed to do that, we apologize. The harm out of this is procedural as opposed to substantive, and we ask for your trust that in the future, in addressing some of the suggestions I think that Councilman Nero and others have made, we will endeavor to put in fail-safe measures to double-check the referrals, to make sure that nobody on any committee could use Mr. Napp, so diligent with airport committee work, is ever uncertain about where this goes. So I can represent to you this evening that that will be the policy, and I will advise you about how that policy will be put in place from now on.
Thank you, Mr. Kern. Mr. Vuskant?
Thank you, Mr. President. Having sat on the airport commission for almost 10 years, I know what it is to go through the leasing process. There's been a lot of problem with this property. Gentlemen's come along, and I think we've made some big improvements. And I have read this thing very thoroughly, so I will be supporting.
Thank you, Mr. Vuskant. Anything else? Mr. Riley?
I just like they say that. I appreciate, I appreciate what corporate council and director finance have just said. It's a good thing. We are, I, in my career as educator and who knows what else, I've made mistakes that sometime we have to just correct our procedure, our policies, and, and go, go on with our life. And I really appreciate when, when people say, oh, yeah, I might have made a little mistake, but I didn't do the intention, I only keep the, the veteran of the community, et cetera, et cetera. So thank you very much, and certainly I'm a little more forceful.
Thank you, Mr. Riley, you're absolutely correct there. Any other special, Mr. Chiesi?
One more question, just the finance director, or maybe to Paul Estefan, you don't have to get up. Is there any back rent still hold on this piece?
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, Mr. Sadi, to watch it, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Everybody have seen, maybe ayes have, to be honest with you, thank you. Okay. House number five, Mr. Pinter?
I'll cross my fingers, Mr. President. See if we can do a one-five tonight. That be okay? This, this comes back to the council under the provisions of section 7-115 of the code of ordinance. What happened here was a, Mr. Halbrenner owns property at 116 Longridge Road. This is the scenic road that the council had, a portion of Longridge Road that the council has designated as scenic. Mr. Halbrenner had done some improvements to a wall adjacent to the road on the north side of his driveway. He did that without a permit, this is part of that section, and therefore he did it improperly. What is back here before you four is that that improvement has been examined by the planning officials as well as the planning commission. They have indicated that they are in agreement with the improvements as made, and subject to an encroachment agreement, which if necessary will be executed by our office to further secure the rights of the city to do any work on that property and require them to remove that wall if that is necessary. The parties have agreed to ask the council for ratification of that improvement on the northern side in accordance with the committee recommendation, the council committee recommendation, and in accordance with planning officials and planning department recommendation. So what you're being asked to do here tonight is to recommend to the council the ratification of the improvement on the northern side for that wall and the issuance of a necessary permit to cure that defect. That's the short story on that.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recommend that the council, having conducted a public hearing as required by code ordinances, section 17-115 subsection D, receive the reports of the planning commission and the ADHOC committee and ratify the walls and site improvements to the northerly portion of the petitioner's site, 168 Longridge Road, subject to an encroachment agreement in standard form with the city as may be required.
So, a second, eh?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Chiesi. Other discussion? Seeing, I'll try and mind all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody abstained? Okay. Seeing as there's no other business to come before us this evening, I want to give a motion again. Who moved it, I'm sorry? Mr. Seaberry won the, seconded by Mr. Sadi? Seconded by Mr. Vuskant. Seaberry made a motion. All in favor of adjournance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.